And there's nothing worse than cold hands because it's so hard to get the blood moving back.
Oh, God, as you get older, your skin gets thinner and...
Yep, yep.
All right, are we good? All right, everybody. I don't know if you can hear me or not through the speakers. Yeah, I guess we can. So, uh, I will call the first meeting in our new Wenatchee City Hall to order. For the record, is Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, is five fifteen P. M., and this is a special meeting. As always, we start with a pledge to our flag, which is right behind me, and I'll go ahead and lead us this time. So, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for roll call this evening, we have all seven council members with us tonight. So, our first item on our agenda is citizens' comment. So, this would be a time that any member of the audience could address the city council on anything that is on tonight's agenda or anything that is concerning to a citizen. We do have one public hearing item tonight, which would be regarding the adoption of the city budget. So, if anyone is, wants to comment about the city budget, you could do so at the public hearing time. So, anybody wish to address the council? If you are, just come up, give us your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Come on, Manuel. You're a good person to be the first person to give us public comment in our new city hall.
I try, our mayor Frank. So, first thing, I want to say thank you for, uh, all the projects for Wenatchee and all Wenatchee, all the valley, and congratulations, beautiful building, beautiful. I know you have a good heart for our, for our valley. So, and also the beautiful lights is the first time I see. Nice. And I want to say thank you for the project, for the peachy. I take a lot of photos when they started and now finished today open. So, now our, uh, our community happy with this project, and I want to say thank you and thank you for everything and for all the projects and the parks and Melhaut Parks and Lincoln Park. So, we want to continue to provide, uh, my support volunteer for our community and for all members and city councils. So, thank you, Manuel.
Thank you, Manuel. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Manuel.
It'll be asked wish to address the city council? See no takers. We'll move into our agenda items. The first is regarding the consent items, which will include approving of today's agenda and the vouchers. So, I entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda and the vouchers. Second.
Motion by council member Kula, second by council member Hornby, to adopt this evening's consent items being the agenda and the vouchers as printed tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one presentation tonight, always one of our favorites regarding Small Business Saturday proclamation. Council member, uh, who's got that? Council member Hornby, would you read that into the record, please?
I would, your honor. Uh, proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the city of Wenatchee, Washington celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-two point five million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point, uh, seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. A small business, uh, employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas seventy-nine percent of customers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their communities on Small Business Saturday. Seventy percent report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and sixty-six percent report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas fifty-eight percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and fifty-four percent reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas the city of Wenatchee, Washington supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, uh, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coates, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as Small Business Saturday and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. I witness, therefore, I have caused a seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on the seventeenth of day of November, two thousand and twenty-two. Frank J. Coates, mayor.
Thank you, council member Hornby. Usually, Linda, I come out and I grab you when we do something. I don't even know how to do this with the new setup here, so.
Is this, am I the first presentation?
You can't, you can't come up this far without a security check. Thank you, Linda.
American Express always send swag, right?
Yeah.
And so, I always get a share.
So, I'm gonna give that to you on your way through, okay? Thank you, Linda.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Linda. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, shop small.
Yep.
I need to tell you this for next Saturday. I have no idea what you're with, but it is next Saturday we're shopping small downtown. We're all ready for you. Um, this is Captain, and yes, Washington will be here walking through downtown.
Oh, actually.
We could be a part of small business Saturday next week. So, shop small, everybody.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you for the event last night as well.
Thank you. Now I'm going home. You froze me again.
Yeah, sorry. All right, so we have a number of action items this evening. Uh, the first regarding an agreement related to Confluence Parkway environmental assessment. So, I'll just go ahead and take this. Um, I, I had the ability to talk to most of you during the week, but we are actively in negotiations with the Schlan County P. U. D. regarding details of Confluence Parkway, mostly around NEPA, mostly around, um, some of the trail work, uh, perhaps some, some land exchange stuff. And so, um, we're, we're getting close to the end. There's been some discussion about trying to get this, uh, this done before the end of the year. And so, um, we're, we're close on a number of items. So, what I was asking is just for permission for me to finalize and then, uh, perhaps sign an agreement with the Schlan County P. U. D. regarding Confluence Parkway. The team met this morning, Steve Smith, Laura, myself, Gary Owen, the city engineer. Um, this is a, this agreement's been going back and forth for probably six months. And, um, again, I've talked to most of you. Keith, I left a message for you, but I'm not, I don't know if it was on a different line. It was sort of a weird answering machine.
Didn't get a message from you.
Okay, so, um, this is something that we've been working on for a while. So, I don't always ask for authority to basically negotiate and sign, but this is one that's very important to us, and so I would indulge in, perhaps you guys giving me some ability to, to get this to the finish line.
So, we're hoping this will finish by year end?
That's my goal.
So, so what you're agreeing with is for the environmental assessment, or is this for the entire project?
It's just environmental work. It's the relationship between the P. U. D. and the city. So, the P. U. D. is obviously very involved in this with licensing and all of that. And so, they're asking us to do a lot of stuff.
Right.
We're asking them to do a lot of stuff. Ultimately, it gets to who gets the final approval on one part of it, who gets the final approval on another part of it, what can we agree to? We can't, you know, what things we need to leave. Ultimately, they're gonna get some approval because of the relationship with FERC. And so, we just gotta get this all ironed out. I think it was a twenty-page agreement. We're still working our way through it. Um, there's some...
But that's what we're doing tonight is just that agreement?
Just the environmental stuff. It's sort of who's gonna do what to whom, who has final approval. And, uh, I couldn't go through the whole list of things. There's a lot. I, I just, we've been working at this for a while. And again, I don't always ask for authority to do both of those things. Usually, I try to get the agreements to you guys' way in advance, and this is one that's gonna sort of get right down to the finish line for some, some reasons related to, you know, who board members are and moving on and off of boards and stuff. All right, if there's any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I will move for the city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign an agreement related to Confluence Parkway environmental assessment with the Schlan County Public Districts, number one.
Second.
Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Cuevas, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign an agreement related to Confluence Parkway environmental assessment with the Schlan County P. U. D. District, number one. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wash Dot Roundabout. Jacob, you don't look like Jacob. You look like Rob.
Good evening, council. Uh, Rob Janerman, Public Works Director. Uh, we're letting Jake and Jacob have the night off, so I said I'd bring this to you. Um, so, the first item that we're talking about is the W. S. D. O. T. Roundabout, uh, that's, and the detour that's needed when that's construction. And Tammy, if you could pull up that slide that we had earlier.
No, there it is.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you. So, uh, this is an agreement with Wash Dot. We're seeking city council approval to give the mayor approval to sign the MO, or the agreement with Wash Dot. So, as you know, the roundabout's proposed out there at Easy and Highway Two. Uh, when they do the construction, uh, they will need to close Easy Street um, in both the north and southbound legs. And so, they've come up with a detour plan that our staff's reviewed, and, um, essentially what it does is it'll be put in place no sooner than July fifth, and it has to be continuous, and it can't, uh, it has to be removed by September twentieth. Um, the, um, the agreement, some of the points of the agreement I listed there is that it will, um, also, it, so it's gonna also route the northbound traffic that's going, wanting to seek the Otobashan Bridge. They'll have to go down through Old Station to get there. So, that's one of the bypasses, as well as the, anybody wanting to go north or south on Easy, uh, they'll have to go around primarily using the Omni Garden Road. Wash Dot's agreed to repair any damage to city streets. We don't anticipate any issues. Wash Dot will be responsible for adjusting signal timing as needed. Um, they'll pay for contracted police enforcement as needed. And finally, uh, the agreement has been reviewed by our, our city attorney. Is there any questions about the, about the detour?
So, how long will this last for? A couple of months?
Uh, yeah, no, you can't put it in place any sooner than September, or excuse me, July fifth, and they have to have it removed by September twentieth. And that's, that's to align with their working days that are in their contract for the roundabout construction.
And so, our friends that are coming from Seattle to Lake Schlan, will they see, notice any differences?
They'll go on through the, that, that leg, that movement on Highway Two will remain open.
Okay. It's just a leg coming from Sunny Slope down, and then if you're down in the Old Station area by the bank and stuff, sort of getting out is gonna be different.
Correct, yeah. So, it'll, it'll, uh, it'll take a while for people to learn the patterns, but the locals will soon figure that out.
All right, any questions for Rob? As we've all experienced, when construction happens, things happen, and this is part of progress. All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the local agency detour agreement, number H. R. two zero one four eight, in substantial conformance with the, uh, draft version presented to us.
Second.
Motion by council member Kula, second by council member Roger Nostetian, to authorize the mayor to sign the local agency detour agreement, number H. R. two zero one four eight, in substantial conformance with the attached draft version. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And McKittrick Street, what's going on, Mr. Rob?
Yeah, so the next thing on the agenda is, um, requesting council to give the mayor approval to sign an interlocal agreement with the P. U. D. Um, this is to bring power into our property that, that we own there, uh, the old Wash Dot property and the northwest wholesale property that we bought. So, when we sold the remnant parcels to, um, Hooked on Toys, Mickelson's, Freeman, Savmart, et cetera, there was an agreement that we would build Columbia, um, in the north direction, and they need power, we need to put power in there. We also need power in McKittrick as it's gonna go underneath the railroad. So, originally, um, the plan was to extend a two-hundred-amp service into that area. And, uh, and when the P. U. D. went back and started studying numbers and looking at what the growth that could occur in there, uh, they found that they needed a six-hundred-amp service. And so, um, we've been in conversations with them for over a year, and this, the L. I. L. A. um, is a product of that. What they've agreed to do is, uh, because we are the developer, but they need this service for, to serve all the future businesses, we're doing a two-third, one-third split, so they'll pick up two-thirds of the cost, we'll pick up one-third. The magnitude of this is pretty large. They have to bring a new six-hundred-amp service across McKit, uh, across North Wenatchee Avenue from the west side of, uh, of the avenue on McKittrick to the east side. So, uh, it's a pretty big deal, but, uh, we've got a, an agreement here in place, and we're just looking for you to give approval for the mayor to sign that.
When, when it was the two-hundred-amp, was the, were we gonna be responsible for the total cost?
Yeah.
So, that's why they figured six-hundred, so we only have to do a third, so we're paying the same amount, maybe?
Correct, yeah. The two-hundred-amp would have been a hundred percent our cost.
Got it.
And they can't burrow under, so they're gonna tear up North Wenatchee Avenue about the same time we do it, or they...
Yeah, it'll be done in conjunction with our signal, and, uh, that, that portion of the work will likely all be done at night because of lane closures and so on.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Public Utility District, number one, of the Schlan County, providing for the reimbursement of costs incurred with the design and construction of electrical and fiber utilities associated with project number zero six two three one six one five and one nine one nine.
Second.
Motion by council member Poyer, second by council member Hornby, uh, to authorize the mayor to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Wenatchee and the Public Utility District, number one, of Schlan County, providing for the reimbursement of costs incurred with the design and construction of electrical and fiber utilities associated with project zero six two three one six one five and one nine one nine, also known as Mega Kittrick, right?
Yes.
All right, any, uh, any discussion? Questions for Rob? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Multifamily tax exemption with D. J. M. L. 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 C., Mr. DeVries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, tonight we have before you a multifamily tax exemption agreement for your consideration. And, uh, the attached resolution authorizes the city of Wenatchee and D. G. M. L. L. C. to enter an agreement under the city's multifamily tax exemption program found in city code and R. C. W., uh, chapter eight fourteen. Uh, the resolution authorizes the issuance of a conditional certificate of acceptance of tax exemption associated with construction of a four-unit residential project at seventeen, uh, Springwater Avenue. If you haven't had a chance to drive by this, uh, yet, it's a great project. It's a real good example of the use of our new design standards in the housing code infill projects that you authorized in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, so if you haven't had a chance, I invite you to take a look at it. It's a great project. We're really excited about it. Um, so upon the completion of the project and fulfillment of the terms of the agreement, the city would issue a final certificate of exemption that would exempt the project from proper tax for a period of eight years. Uh, the exemption applies just to the housing improvements and not to the land or any non-residential area. Uh, this specific project is a, is not providing any affordable housing components, which is why it's an eight-year project instead of a twelve-year project. Um, and then the, um, once approved, the, an annual report is required by the property owner. Uh, the city is, been working, um, as a participant, commenting on, uh, new process for multifamily tax exemptions. Uh, there's some updates to the statute were made by the legislature in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, that process ends in two thousand and twenty-three as far as looking at those guidelines and requirements. And then we're also, uh, going to be reviewing that through our comprehensive plan update, um, uh, as requested through, uh, the city council and analyzing whether that should change, uh, as far as, um, a requirement for affordable housing. But as today, uh, this, uh, application is, is authorized under our code, and we'd recommend approval and stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Glenn? I know that Keith had an email that you, what you mentioned that you responded to earlier, so I think that hopefully answered the question, and we'll be dealing with that when the comp plan in the next couple of years.
Correct.
Yeah, he did, did answer my questions, and I, and my only concern is, is that it's gonna take a while for that process to, to get there.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, these things are gonna continue to be allowed.
Yeah.
And I was hoping maybe there'd be some way of limiting it, maybe limiting it to those who are doing affordable housing instead. Just something to consider.
All right, any other questions for Glenn? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I will move for city council to adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-nine, authorizing the execution of an eight-year multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with D. J. M. L. 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 C.
Second.
Motion by council member Harold, the second by council member Roger Nostetian, who said it really loud into his microphone, 'cause I heard him, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. To adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-nine, authorizing the execution of an eight-year multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with D. J. M. L. 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 C. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Land lease between the city of Wenatchee and Pibus.
Your honor, I'll recuse myself.
That is so noted. Council member Hornby is recusing himself. Laura Gloria.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. The item before you is a vacant land lease between the city of Wenatchee and Pibus Public Market. So, back in August, the city purchased the three parcels south of Pibus, um, which has been historically used for overflow parking. Um, Pibus has requested use that land for that use, and so the, that's what the proposed lease is for. Um, it, there's no cost, but Pibus is required to maintain the, the parking as they do now, you know, clean up garbage, that kind of thing. Um, either party terminates the lease within a hundred and eighty days. It's month-to-month. Um, so it's pretty straightforward in terms of terms. Um, happy to answer any questions you might have.
And the huge rental fee we're collecting?
Oh, no cost.
Oh, no cost. Okay, just double checking.
No, it's great that we're doing month-to-month and a hundred and eighty days that either party, so, has options for future.
Yeah. But, but as you know, when we purchased it, we did have an agreement with the walkers that we'll, we'll be parking for the next ten years to some degree. So, hopefully, there's a way to make it asphalt and stormwater and all that sort of stuff. But for now, it's sort of gonna be what it's gonna be. All right, any other questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the vacant land lease between city of Wenatchee and Pibus Market Charitable Foundation. Authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by council member Poyer, second by council member Cuevas, to authorize the mayor's signature on the vacant land lease between the city of Wenatchee and Pibus Market Charitable Foundation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. And, uh, extension of an agreement with Mission and Kidditas Apartments, L. L. C.
Yep. Um, so, the, the second item before you is a First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Mission Kidditas Apartments, L. L. C. That's a Widener Apartments. They're doing business under that L. L. C. for the purposes of this development. Um, so, we have a current active development agreement that was signed in September of two thousand and nineteen for a multifamily residential, uh, construction, uh, project on Mission and Kidditas. That was a lot that was formerly owned by the city, and the development agreement included the transaction of selling the property to them as well as, uh, Widener developing the multifamily project. Um, recently, they requested a two-year extension due to the impacts of the pandemic, uh, increases in the price of materials, uh, uh, lack of labor. Um, so, the proposed ex, uh, extension changes the outside date from sixty months to eighty-four months. It also extends the vesting codes that weren't effective the time of the agreement from five years to seven years. So, in essence, it's a two-year extension. Um, I will say that I did speak to Widener recently, and they are still, um, wanting to move forward with the project, and will start construction in first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. So, they would technically still be within the allowed, um, timelines of the current development agreement, but they wanted to ensure that they have some additional space and capacity in, in case they ran into something else that maybe wasn't anticipated. Um, so that being said, um, the First Amendment to the agreement extends those terms for two years, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Obviously, not going as fast as we had hoped. Um, we, we do have some rights to repurchase some property if we wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but then, Mr. Widener also owns all of the property around there anyhow. So, he's bought the old jail, he bought the paint store, he bought Keyhole, he bought a number of properties in that area. So, um, we wouldn't be able to really do anything with our parking lot other than make it a parking lot again, and that's not what the intention of this agreement is. So, um, in discussions with him, COVID did slow them down a little bit, uh, harder to find contractors, and so I think it's appropriate that we, uh, give him a two-year extension, and, um, I, I believe that he'll start construction in two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion for the city council to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Washington Mission and Kidditas Apartments, L. L. C. and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by council member Kula, second by council member Hornby, to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Washington Mission and Kidditas Apartments, L. L. C. and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Posenjack has two items this evening. Uh, the first will be our Second Amendment to the two thousand and twenty-two budget, uh, which is something we always do this time of the year. And then, once we conclude with that, we will open up a public hearing for adoption of the two thousand and twenty-three budget. So, Mr. Posenjack.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, this fir, this first, uh, first ordinance has to do with the two thousand and twenty-two budget, the current budget. And as you all know, we are under state law that requires us to stay within our expense budget each year. And so, uh, one of the things that we, uh, that we end up doing, one reason, 'cause we're a very dynamic city, and when we built the two thousand and twenty-two budget, when we were planning this back in two thousand and twenty-one, we did not anticipate all of the things that we were gonna end up doing in two thousand and twenty-two. And so, we have to come and we have to amend our budget to keep us within our budget constraints. Um, so, the first item, uh, I think you've seen these. Finance Committee has already reviewed and approved the budget amendments. Um, and so, uh, we're asking for the official, uh, adoption of the budget amendment so that we can stay within our budget.
And this is one, because we're amending a budget, we need a majority of the council plus one in order to adopt the amendment. This is, all stuff has been through Finance Committee and, um, all of these adjustments. And some are just transfers, you know, as opposed to expenditure. Some is just moving money around in different places. Any questions for Brad? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-nine, amending the two thousand and twenty-two budget as adopted by the ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty as amended by the... as amended by the ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-eleven, revoking, recalling, decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for entering findings. That is, ordinance is in the best interest of the city and requiring that the, this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member Kulas, to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine, amending the two thousand twenty-two budget as adopted by ordinance twenty-two-one-threety and as amended by ordinance number twenty-two-two-eleven, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of the total appropriations provided for entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city and require that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad. All right. We have one public hearing item tonight. That's regarding the adoption of the two thousand twenty-three budget. So for public hearings, we will hear from staff, I'll present to council, council can ask questions. When that period is over, we'll open up to any member of the audience that resists to address the council regarding the adoption of the budget and over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. So, Mr. Posenjack, it's all yours.
All right. As, uh, as mayor said, this is for the adoption of the two thousand twenty-three budget. And, uh, we have been discussing this, uh, at, at council a couple of times over the last month and a half. Uh, we've gone through this at finance committee. Uh, we've gone through it in detail at past, uh, council meetings and finance committees. So I'm gonna just, uh, present the budget and keep it short for you. Um, uh, again, this, uh, our, our total budget is a hundred and forty-two million in appropriations. And, um, this is, uh, what is required for us to adopt a budget by the end of the year. And I can guarantee you, at some point next year, we will be amending it as well. Um, but yes, if you have any, any questions that we haven't already, uh, answered at previous meetings.
So the biggest thing with the approval of the budget is that we're approving the expenditures as presented, right? So there are times that we have, um, the revenues are estimated, but we are approving the expenditure of the, of the money as shown on these, on the attachments.
Yeah. Yeah.
So any questions? I know we've seen this thing a number of times. Any questions for Brad before I open up to any member of the public?
I'm, I'm still just gonna throw my two cents worth out on our HR position. Um, still kinda concerned about having a third position without really knowing that full workload. I work for a company that has, uh, thousands of people glob- globally and we have two people that manage the United States with a manager that is worldwide. So without knowing more about what it is our HR department actually has to do on a day-to-day basis, I'm having a hard time with that decision.
So let's hear from the public and then we can have a discussion if we get, if we get a motion. So any member of the audience wish to address the council on, uh, the public hearing item regarding adoption of the budget? See no takers. All right. Now it's over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. So should we get a motion on the table and then have discussion? How do you guys wanna handle this?
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance twenty-two-two-eighteen, adopting the final budget for the city of One Anchee, Washington, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member, uh, Harold, to adopt ordinance number, mine says twenty-two-two-eight, adopting the fa- final budget for the city of One Anchee, Washington, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Okay, so Keith mentioned the, the HR position and, um, you know, all I can tell you is, like, I think it was yesterday, uh, that position, cause it was a, it's a summer intern that has stayed on, was out signing up all the employees for the, uh, employee wellness. So we get the two percent reduction. So she was out working, uh, out in the public works building, getting folks signed up so we get to the fifty percent stuff. Um, she's, uh, that, that department, I'm, I'm in there every day. Um, we finally have coverage. You know, we've got some folks that are in and out and it's nice to have coverage in that office. So, um, you know, I, I think when the finance committee met, we, we make all these decisions, um, and we take them seriously. And this is one that I think is not only important for that particular group, but I think it's important for the city as well. And so, um, that's sort of why I got through finance and, um, I'll get you a copy for job description. I know we've got that on, online and some of that stuff, so you would have a better idea of.
And, and I guess, and I guess I'm okay approving it for now, but what I would like to see is what that actual workload is and a, and a better idea of
Okay.
of what's happening in that department.
Perfect. All right. Any other discussion regarding the budget? So we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor of the, uh, motion, uh, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on the budget. I know these are big projects and I appreciate you and your team for, for all of their work and putting this together.
Thanks, and I, I.
Take the rest of the year off.
I, yeah, and I shouldn't, and I should have said earlier, um, I always, I just wanna recognize all the other department directors and their staff. Um, this is a, it's, this is a great place to be a finance director and the entire team from, um, from bottom, bottom up to council, finance committee and the mayor. Um, it's, it's, it's a very easy and peaceful budget process that we have and, um, it doesn't get contentious. So I don't feel like anybody's trying to hide anything and all the departments work, uh, work very well together on this. So, um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. All right, mayor's report. Um, so we did have our employee breakfast on Monday morning and that was very nice. There was probably about a hundred people there, maybe a little bit more than that. Half the city crew was there, so that was very nice. Uh, we do have bi-weekly, uh, safe park check-in meetings with, uh, Scott and, um, Glenn and his team. So we didn't meet on Monday, got updated on, on all of that stuff. We've, uh, did meet with the state treasurer's office regarding our tax increment financing district, um, which is the North One Anchee Avenue district. So they had some questions for us. So, uh, staff is working on a response, um, to that. Uh, we did meet with the port. We have a quarterly, uh, meeting between the port and the city. So we met and went over sort of issues that are, um, important to both the port and the city. And then we were, we had an interim control open house, uh, upstairs, probably what, twenty-five folks or so there, um, nice turnout. I think most of the, yeah, I just, it was a good turnout and staff did a great job and we had folks from, uh, Eastern Anchee helping us as well. Uh, and then I did coffee and commerce, uh, with, uh, Chamber, uh, at Pibus on Wednesday morning to also talk about homelessness and I think that went well. Uh, thanks to Linda and her team for having us for dinner last night with the WDA. That was very nice. And, um, today's, uh, ribbon cutting. So thanks for bearing with us outside and, uh, I thought that went well and I think the lights are super cool. So, um, Laura, fill in the gaps for me.
Um, just wanna say, oh, that's loud. Goodness. Um, thank you to Dan Nancom for showing up and, and for helping us with the land acknowledgement. Uh, Brooklyn with, Holton with Firm Foundations really helped us put everything together as well. And then Cafe and Parque Badrinos for the, helping us with the entertainment as well as the onsite translation. So a lot of folks, um, really wanted to be a part of this and it's such a special day. So thank you to the council for helping us make it happen and, yeah, it was a fun day.
Thanks to our IT team. So Tim, and I don't know how many folks are here, but we got our consultants with us as well. So this is their first time working through this system. So thank you guys for, I know they've been at it for a couple of days trying to make sure all this stuff works. And I think this is now on Microsoft Teams and so people can watch from home and see this live. If you have a Teams app, um, and we'll start working on sort of the people calling in, how they'll sort of queue in through here. And if your, uh, council members are traveling, instead of calling in, you'll be coming through the Microsoft Teams and you'll just show up right here on our computer like everybody else. It's, so.
Yeah. It's great.
Yeah. So whoever's traveling first can be the first one to try it out.
We'll get to see it on the jumbo screen.
I think it's gonna be me.
What? It's gonna be Jose, isn't it? Uh, just in terms of our next set of meetings, obviously we do not meet on the twenty-fourth. Uh, we won't meet on the first on a special meeting and then our last meeting of the year will also be on, uh, December eighth. So council members, anything for the good of the order?
Link Transit Board met, uh, this week. Obviously no secret to anybody that diesel fuel prices are high and we had to make some adjustments to, uh, purchasing policies because the one-truck load of diesel exceeds the, um, staff level approval for the expenditure. We're, the Link Transit's also looking into a, a different, um, uh, electrical bus that would be able to, uh, travel farther distances between charges. Uh, there'll be, uh, a team of some board members and staff, uh, going to Europe to look at, uh, uh, Ebusco, um, which, uh, provides a carbon fiber framed bus, which that additional lighter weight will allow it to run, to, uh, make the runs between here and Schlan
Okay.
uh, and back, uh, without, uh, without having to be charged mid, mid-trip. So looking into that, uh, seriously. And also the, uh, board, um, authorized retention of a recruiting firm, uh, to help, uh, with recruitment of the general manager's position. Uh, Mr. Durak has indicated that, or his wife has indicated that he'll be retiring in, I believe it is September of next year. So, uh, they'll be going out to take a look at, uh, how to recruit that. Uh, museum met, museum board met also on Tuesday. Uh, probably the, the largest thing out of that is that the, uh, there's a, uh, unofficial, um, straw pull that the board of directors believe now is the time to, uh, begin a fundraising campaign for the substantial redo of the museum, uh, there. And looks like we'll take formal action next month to
Okay.
begin that process of, uh, of garnering, uh, donations, uh, you know, in addition to like the pledges that the cities are, the commitment that the city's already made for that process.
Excellent. I know there, uh, got a, maybe a big donor or two that'll be known at some point. So that's good. Excellent to get that sort of started. Any other council members? Anything for the good of the order?
I will be. Had a, a brief meeting. It was actually fairly quick. Um, not a lot. Hotels are happy. Everything's up ten percent over, uh, year-over-year. They're happy with that. Uh, car sales are dropping and due to prices and interest rates. Uh, on a down note, uh, the attorney's offices were indicating that, uh, evictions, both commercial and residential are, uh, on the increase. That, that says a lot for the economy that we're in right now. Healthcare, a lot of respiratory illness and flu are really up. In fact, uh, we just found out one of our grandsons has that respiratory illness that's going on, so. Retail inventory is great, but if, uh, you need a Christmas ship, shopping list done, do it now because, uh, supplies are dwindling quickly and it's just hard for them to get, uh, replacements in. Port's still working with, uh, other airlines. No answers yet. New landing system may be ready to go by the end of next month, but it sounds like it'll be after the first year before all the pilots are ready to use it.
Okay. I guess it's important to have the pilots know how to land the plane. Yeah.
Well, to use the new e- system.
Okay. Yeah, Jose?
I will be on vacation for more than a month.
Okay.
My last meeting here will be on the eighth of December.
Okay.
And I'll probably be gone until the eleventh or the twelfth of January.
Okay. So when's our first meeting in January? Do we know?
I believe it's the twelfth.
Okay. You may not miss any meetings.
Okay. Good timing.
That's why you decided to go home on the twelfth.
Right.
But your wife, she may wanna stay longer though. Huh? It's gonna be nice and warm. Huh?
It would be that, yes.
Didn't anything from you or Mike or?
Um, we had the open house for, uh, the homeless and talking about our safe parks and everything on Tuesday evening. You were there. Uh, council member Poyor was there. I don't think, weren't you? Oh, no. I'm sorry.
Just say yes.
Yes. Yes, I was not there.
I thought you were there. Anyway, it was very, it went over very well. I felt overall people were very supportive of what we were doing and very pleased, so.
Good. Thank you.
That does bring up, I, I would like to meet, uh, one of the times with Glenn, uh, and Scott.
Okay.
I, I don't know. That, I, I think that's important for all of the city council.
So next ti- next time we have a meeting, um, we can email the council members and then make sure we just don't have a quorum and we'll just include him with our, uh, bi-weekly check-in. Yeah. You should meet Scott. Scott's a good boy and he's doing great work and, um.
And he has invited all of the council members to go out with him when he's doing outreach.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
All right.
Indeed. He has also invited me personally to do a, a tour with him because it's, it's on my district.
Right.
And he says he wants to have a meeting with me, so we can, we, we, we need to talk about in there. Yeah.
So Mark and Kathy Lewis were at the, uh, open house the other night and I asked them, cause again their house is right next door to the south end one. And they said they have not had one problem in the two-plus months it's been open. Nothing.
They were very supportive of it and they said they haven't had one issue, not one. And they really speak their mind if they were.
Oh, they would, they would let us know. Yeah. Excellent. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Thanks, everyone. Welcome to New City Hall and it is, uh, six o'clock.